All right, we're gonna start then. All right, good evening. Tonight is January 31st, 2023, and this is the Hanson Select Board meeting being televised on Whitman-Hanson Community Access. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, as per usual, we have a jam-packed agenda, but we're gonna get through this efficiently. But before we do that, we're gonna have Mrs. Rain read the public announcements.
Number one, nomination papers for the May 20th town election are now available at the town clerk's office for the following offices: moderator for a three-year term, two select board for three-year terms, assessor for a three-year term, board of health for a three-year term, cemetery commissioner for a three-year term, planning board for a five-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, two trustees of public library for three-year terms, Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee pre-K through 12 for a three-year term, and water commissioner for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town office for which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 27th, 2023, and nomination papers must be returned to the town clerk's office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 31st. Number two, the treasurer-collector for the town of Hanson wishes to inform residents that the third and fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills for fiscal year 2023 were mailed and will be due on February 1st, 2023, and May 1st, 2023, respectively. We urge any taxpayer who has not received a bill to contact the treasurer-collector's office at 781-293-2422. Number three, join Whitman-Hanson Cable Access and the town of Hanson Select Board on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, in telling Comcast about the value of community media in Hanson. We are seeking testimonials from community members, town departments, school district officials, and any other stakeholders who may have good feedback to share. The upcoming hearing is part of the process as WHCA-TV looks back on what has been accomplished and forward to new goals for the next 10 years. Number four, the town clerk's office will be closed all day Thursday, February 2nd, for a town clerk's conference. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, February 7th, 2023; Select Board, February 21st, 2023.
Thank you, Mrs. Rain. Okay, moving on to our agenda. As a procedural matter, we have a dog hearing that we need to close, so I will entertain a motion to close the dog hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And we're gonna take things a little bit out of order in the interest of the folks that are joining us, so that they're not tortured by having to sit through everything that we're talking about. And to that end, we're going to have an update on the veteran service officer's position. Mrs. Green.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm chair members of the board. So as you remember, unfortunately, at our last meeting, we regretfully accepted the resignation of our current VSO, Timothy White. In the interim on that, I did have a meeting with Hanover and discussed possibly sharing a veteran service officer between the two towns. In that meeting, there were pros and cons. Some of the cons, though, that I wanted to bring to your attention when thinking of this, and Mr. White had joined us at that meeting, and it was very beneficial having him there. If we do share with another town, unfortunately, a veteran services officer cannot be in two places at once. So when Memorial Day comes around, which town gets the parade? Which town gets the celebration? Is it gonna be Hanson or is it the other town? Up to the board of whether you'd want us to have our own. And another, so a few other discussion points that were brought up was where would the veteran service officer be housed? Hanover suggested over in Hanover. My concern, maybe some of our veterans can't make it over to Hanover, thereby creating a hardship on them as far as transportation. We, you know, talked about what their salary was, their hours, and there were a few other things that just really didn't quite sit well with me, didn't really make me feel positive about that joint effort. So I had, we had some conversation with our current believing VSO and our town accountant about thinking of bringing in our own veteran service officer on a full-time basis. Mr. White has let us know that their workload does warrant a full-time position, as well as some additional new, and I'll let him talk about the new PACT Act, which requires additional work on the part of the veteran service officer. And then I will talk with our accountant to let you know how we're going to fund this position.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. White, if you don't mind indulging us for a moment, I just wanted to see if anybody has any questions for Ms. Green before we turn it over to you. Anybody have anything for Ms. Green? Agree on the holiday, and I know Tim felt, you felt very torn on the holidays trying to do that. And in terms of housing a veteran's officer in a town other than Hanson for Hanson resident, that's a no-go for me. I don't know how other people feel about it, but you're right, you might have mobility issues, and I think we need to have that in-town hall. Did anybody have any?
No, that's the same way.
Okay, all right. Mr. White, we would love to hear your thoughts.
Thank you, thank you for the time. I've actually discussed this in the past with the town administrator some time ago, so, you know, things have developed just in the sense of new laws. So I'll discuss the PACT Act first before I talk about Memorial Day and Veterans Day and all the other ceremonies.
Yep.
The PACT Act was really a sweeping change or add-on to the number of presumptive diseases for Vietnam veterans who have been exposed to Agent Orange and all the diseases that they show up with. In addition, it's heavily involved with the Gulf War veterans and since, you know, the post-9/11 veterans. They came up with presumptive diseases that the veterans from the Gulf War and on, and it's a list of like 20 god-awful diseases from being exposed to the burn pits and all the oil well fires from back in the Gulf War. They've also expanded, and most of the clientele I see is still Vietnam guys, they expanded geography. And for years, I've been here and vets have been saying, "I was exposed to Agent Orange, and I was in Guam, and there was nothing I could do for them." They were getting denied, or they weren't filing a claim, they weren't gonna receive anything.
Yep.
Because it wasn't presumptive. Well, now Guam is a territory that they know they used, around all the air bases and the perimeters and so forth, they used Agent Orange. So all the Air Force guys, they're coming down with the same diseases that the Army guys in Vietnam were facing. So the PACT Act changed all that and added Thailand, Laos, numerous, American Samoa, Guam, et cetera, and a few other places. I can't remember them all, but it's really been a sweeping change. So now, you know, the word's spreading, I've done talks, Veterans Day, I think I talked about it.
Yep.
Some to really let people know. So more than half my work, more than half my work is PACT Act, a visitation, at least coming in to talk about it and find out what's this all about type thing, and then figure out, do I have a claim and what disease I've dealt with, et cetera. If a veteran never filed a claim, but died 20 years ago, liver cancer, something like that, the surviving spouse of that veteran, if she hasn't, she, he, whatever, hasn't remarried, they're eligible to file a claim and seek, was the veteran's death service-related?
Really? Wow.
And if, if it's deemed that, yeah, this veteran died of liver cancer, a presumptive disease of the campwater, I mean, the Camp Lejeune Water Contamination Act, but never filed, well, now I can file on behalf of a surviving spouse. And potentially, and I know it's years later, but potentially, that person would be awarded what's called Dependence Indemnity Compensation, right, DIC. And they would receive an award letter of being 100% service-connected, related, surviving spouse, and they'd be eligible for property taxes. They would be eligible for the Mass State Annuity. This is all stuff that they haven't been eligible for. So now the questions are starting to come out of the woodwork. But that's the workload that people don't know, and the word needs to spread more and more, so the importance of outreach if you do decide to go in a full-time mode. I'd talked to town administrator about this before because I thought there is growth here. I mean, there's a number of people, COVID kinda hampered us for years on outreach, and so people weren't visiting the office, coming in at all, so, you know, the claims just kinda stagnated and so forth. That all can grow. I know several people who are in housing that are eligible for veteran benefits, Chapter 115, and they just don't, they don't wanna deal with the paperwork, they don't apply for it. But even having said that, VA claims, there's tons of veterans and surviving spouses that are out there that may quite possibly be eligible for VA compensation. So that's the growth in the business. Aside from that, on Memorial Day stuff, it's been constant consternation, you know, this year as an example, Memorial Day, we did the parade in Hanson at 9:00 AM start because I needed to have it finished by a certain time so that I could go to Rockland for an 11 o'clock start in Rockland. Thankfully, Rockland changed, there used to be a parade, they changed to a ceremony. So we did a ceremony at the high school, which was great, and that was, you know, an hour-plus long. But it's, you know, it's me running around coordinating, trying not to anger multiple American legions, VFWs, DAV, all the people who, you know, show up for this care deeply. And so that, and then Veterans Day, there's numerous breakfasts at the COAs, I'll do a breakfast or a lunch at a church or something like that, anywhere to really talk about veteran issues for half hour to an hour. Well, that's all, it's time consumption, you know, and frankly, you know, being here just, you know, what's been two days a week, I put in way more than that.
Yeah.
Around town, whether it's taking care of veteran memorials, all the poles that we have and the planters and stuff like that, flags at half-mast, et cetera, taking care of all the flags and the flag poles, you know, I'm doing that. It could be a Thursday or a Friday, it's not in my normal two days, but it's just, that's what you do. So I do believe there's enough hours there to support, and even if there was a gap in time, that's growth time to me, that's outreach time, that's community involvement, connect to people, and start getting that word out to build the claims. So I'm definitely a proponent of more support. And finally, just as another reminder, the veterans' agent, everything I do brings back money to the town, whether it's a VA claim that is awarded to a veteran, that's money that's going into that veteran's bank account, direct deposit, for them to spend wherever, but hopefully some of it's in Hanson. And other than that, the Chapter 115 veteran benefits, that's coming back to the community, right? So everything I do, 75% of that is certified by the state and comes back to the town one year later. So even if there's a cost in a salary or so forth, or benefits, or whatever you're trying to judge, it can be gained throughout the entire town. So that's my support of, you know.
Well, I think I'm, I'm in a state of shock really about how much that's expanded, and I appreciate you taking the time to explain that. I've seen it cryptically described, but I didn't really appreciate the depth and breadth of what it would impact, and I thank you for, you know, taking on the weight of the world on behalf of Hanson's veterans and doing the job that you've done for as long as you have. So I think, did you say we wanted to hear from Eric in terms of the financials and the affordability of that?
Yes. So basically, right now, in the FY '23 budget, the salary line is based at $31,998. For the FY '24 budget for the position is to present $32,637. I have reached out to, again, social managers and got some responses of what the salaries are for veterans. And basically, the salaries from what I got ranged from $56,001 all the way up to $73,358. So that's the range of the salaries that I got. So talking with Eric today, my thought was if we offered a 32-hour-a-week position at $55,000 a year, that might be enough to entice somebody to join us as a veteran service officer. Now, we've already got those amounts set in the budget, and we can actually use some ARPA money to supplement the budget for the next two years to bring it up to the $55,000. I have had a conversation with Eric about it, and Eric, if you'd like to speak on how the ARPA would work and that it is allowable expense for us to use.
Can we just put a pin in this for just one moment? Did anybody have any questions or comments about what we've discussed so far? Because we are covering this at a rapid pace, so I just wanna, any?
Well, only that Tim and I talked, and I wrote it down with the PACT Act, I didn't know what it was called, but Tim, I lost a very good friend, and Tim was able to use this to see if my friend would qualify. And I don't know if he did or not, but that's just one case that Tim had to do the research to see if a mutual person that we know was gonna be eligible.
I hope so.
And, you know.
And this is important. My own father passed away from signet cell cancer, which is Agent Orange, and I will tell you, the fact that he applied for these benefits has made a tremendous difference in my mother's life, and so I think it's really important. And I'm glad that you're doing the outreach, and I guess what I'm wondering is, you're seeing an uptick in people coming to you as a result of the PACT Act, or do you, I know people can be, I know a lot of these guys and gals can feel very, you know, self-conscious about asking for help because, you know, they're people who serve, so, you know, is it something we really have to go beat the bushes and try to get people to come out?
Today alone, I met with two veterans. One was PACT Act, and he could have applied a few years ago. Then I had two veterans I'm working on the phone with about the PACT Act, and out of the four that I'm dealing with, one just held off, you know, for years. Personal choice, whatever, you gotta talk about a lot of stuff, and you have to get into some personal things, so, you know, people hold back for different reasons, or they just don't, they don't think they deserve it, they think somebody else deserves it, but they all, if, you know, you never know what you're being exposed to when you're in the service. You sign up on the dotted line, they send you into an area, and you don't know really what, you're dealing with the unknown.
Right.
And that unknown comes down the road 20 years later and may haunt you. So they've all earned something at some point, and it's really just talking it through and getting them comfortable to, you know, feel free to speak up and file it.
Okay, that's super helpful. Any other, Mr. Weeks?
Not so much a question, but, you know, because we're gonna have probably a similar conversation when it comes to, you know, elder affairs and all the great work that you're doing as well. You know, these types of human services, supports and resources that we have, it's on, I like the fact that you, when you were talking about this, you put revenue as like dead last as important on this, because it's about quality of life, it's about people, it's about people that have either contributed to society in some way through the elder affairs office, or they've contributed in, we're willing to give the ultimate sacrifice through the services that you do. We already know that it's a full-time job with people just coming to you, but we really owe it to everybody. The PACT Act is huge, don't get me wrong, but there's also a million other things that we could be helping with servicing or connecting people or something. So could you imagine all the good that we could do as a community if we had people with your passion, but full-time, dedicated, to not just help the people that come to you, but for us to go find them?
Right.
And then help that many more people?
Right.
So you never, I don't think you're ever gonna hear anybody say that, you know, it's not a worthwhile investment, because even just helping one person, but you're going actively out there, and I love the idea that your pitch is, "I could be helping more people, I could be going out and connecting more people to resources if I had the time to do that." And I think just that alone, between the two, you know, representatives tonight, that's really what it's about.
Mm-hmm.
It's how do we find more people to help?
Right.
Simple as that. You had me at that.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I agree. I mean, the stuff with Mary Fuel Assistance, medical savings and resources, I deal with the same things for the veterans and surviving spouses, so, you know, really, you know, piggyback on each other in certain circumstances. But there are huge benefits. For somebody who's never received them or never inquired about them, you know, helps a long way.
Ask, Mrs. Rain. Totally. Are these benefits retroactive? I mean, someone who's held off for so long, do they lose out, or is there any kind of an excuse?
No, because the law just went into effect January 1st, 2023.
Okay.
So people I'm dealing with were denied, say, 10 years ago.
Oh.
I'm refiling, there's all kinds of different ways, either if they were denied, I'm filing an appeal, if they never filed, I'm filing a claim for them, if they passed away, then I'm filing for the surviving spouse. So it all depends on kind of the personal stories. But no, it is, unfortunately, it's not retro.
Okay. So it's from when they apply and?
Right.
Okay.
Well, now, since it's, January 1st is passed and the law is in effect.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yep. And now, I know we were gonna talk to Eric about the ARPA money. I will say, this board has said, and we've been pretty consistent about it, ARPA is one-time money. We cannot build a budget based on one-time money. It's not sustainable, and the bottom will fall out. So that isn't to say that we might not make an exception if the board decides, or that we might not find money in the budget somewhere else, but just, I mean, I think, I think we've talked about this ad nauseam really, and I think we've all said that that's kind of our position on that. But tell us otherwise, Eric. Tell us why, why it would be okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, I don't think the $25,000 will, you know, break the budget. That's one thing. But, you know, the ARPA funds, you can use it for, you know, the way I look at it would be kinda like a bridge to building in the budget if you need to. It's a bridge. And as far as like the future goes, two items I wanna just mention. So if we do a five-year forecast, well, say you use ARPA funds, $25,000 for two years in a row, that's fine, then what's gonna happen in the third year? So the third year, you know, if we look at like the cannabis revenue coming in, the extra meals tax revenue coming in, I think we could absorb it pretty easily in two or three years. And then the other thing that I wanna note too, just from a financial point of view, because I know we're talking about benefits, but behind the scenes is kind of, if the veteran service officer doesn't do their job right, they'll pay out benefits and the state won't reimburse us. So it's 100% coming out, zero coming back. But if you have a good VSO, if they make, you know, if they do their job, you're making sure you get all the revenue in, so you'll have the revenue coming in. So it could be a risk if you don't have a good VSO, that you might even lose money that you won't even know about, because it's kinda like behind the scenes, the book. So to me, it's not like, you know, not a lot of money, but it's definitely eligible for ARPA funds, and I understand what you're saying about sustainability, but that's where you, sometimes you need a bridge to get to where you wanna get.
Yep.
So it's up to the board.
All right. That's super helpful. Mr. Hickey, you look handsome.
Well, that's what I was thinking with the board, that if we use some of the ARPA money, we would have two years to come up with a plan, but Eric pretty much explained it that we could get it in. In easy math, I don't, where did you come up with the $25,000? The difference between Tim's salary and?
I'll have to give Lisa the credit for that, like, I kinda ballparked it, but she told me, she said, "This is the difference," basically, it's the difference between the salary of the part-time person and the salary of a full-time person.
Okay. And I just wanted to jump on what Joe said earlier, because, you know, Tim, you know, you are that person that goes out and looks for it. Easy math, 10,000 people in town, $25,000, that's about $2.50 per resident, so it's a cup of coffee.
And you could quantify.
Like a year.
You could quantify.
To get a full-time veteran agent.
And you can easily quantify how effective a full-time officer is, because we know what the caseload is now, and in, you know, two years, we'll figure out what the caseload is, so you can tell if, you know, the person's doing the outreach and so forth. I'm learning a lot about, from Tim, like veterans, but my daughter also works in that thing too, so she kept me up to speed like this, she had a lot of stuff.
Now, Mr. White, is it, in your opinion, the salary we're talking about for 32 hours, is that competitive?
Well, yeah, I do. I think, you know, Hanson's still a small town, I know, I go to every town meeting, so I know all the, you know, problematic issues that start with a town meeting. So I do, and I know town administrators, you know, it's not, I don't think you're basing it off of 35 hours, so I think it's based on, you know, trying to build a big road So, you know, we're not Marshfield or anything like that, where, I mean, shoot, you're not Rockland, and it's not like, you know, in Rockland, to be honest with you, I'm gonna be making more than that, but I have five, six times the work right now. So I do think Hanson, I think it's competitive, but if you start growing, Chapter 115, and the time management of all that stuff, and the VA claim cases start increasing even further, then, you know, maybe you have to look at it down the road.
Definitely. Mr. Hickey.
Tim, why don't you write down what you make in Rockland? Thirty-two-hour work week, there would be no benefits.
Well, no, 32 hours does qualify them.
Is it anything over 20?
Anything over 20 qualifies as benefits.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, just as a reminder, as a retired Coast Guard, I don't accept benefits anyway, so it depends on the candidate.
Right, right.
That you're getting, right?
Yep. Okay. Is there anybody here who, Ed, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just, I have nothing against, I like the idea of going the 32 hours, I'm not quite sure why we're talking 32 and 35, but that's, but I really don't think ARPA is the place to go, and I'm wondering what the other options are other than?
Well, even given Eric's explanation that it would be really just sort of leaning in that direction, not, you know, we'd have to know as a board that, and it's not gonna break the bank, because it is $25,000, but that we'd have to, we'd have to build that in.
Yeah.
I assume you're thinking, we'll have new growth, the cannabis money, the meals tax, you know?
And that can, that decision can actually be deferred, because as the budget requests come in, and you get the schools, and you get the state aid, and then you're gonna say like, hey, we need to balance the budget. So you might have to make choices here, like, do we wanna cut here or, and fund the thing at full cost in the budget? Because obviously, that's preferable. Or would it be beneficial to kinda use the ARPA to save some XYZ program? So the decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but it's an option, you know, you'll have to do a value decision, you know? Is it worth cutting $50,000, or is it worth cutting $25,000 in the budget to fund it? Or maybe we can use some ARPA funds, but it's really in the scope of the whole budget, it's not, you know?
Mr. Hickey, can you hold on just one second? Mr. Heel, let's, let's, funding aside, I'm not saying that that's not an important critical component even, but conceptually, you agree that we need to move in the direction of giving more hours for the new?
100%.
New veteran service officer that we would?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hickey, and then Mr. Weeks.
Okay. Eric, I think a couple weeks ago, you said, and you mentioned again tonight, with the food tax.
Yeah.
And a couple of weeks ago, you said $48,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we know that we can't earmark anything, it has to go into the general fund.
That's right.
But that's $48,000 more in the general fund that if we created the position, we could use. Also, since COVID, and not that this is a recurring thing, but we haven't done any tax title property auctions, and those numbers have gone up. So that's another source of possible revenue back into the town.
Excellent points. Mr. Weeks.
I think you might have already answered the question when we were talking to Ed, but, so we're not making a decision on funding sources right now.
No, it's not necessary, yeah.
Yeah, right, so right now, it's really just a matter of, do we agree that this is worth it?
Exactly.
And then we have to play the? And then we then we have to to play the game coming into May town meeting.
Look at the whole budget and like, your budget's going to have a full budget for a full-time VSO. So you'll have that, you'll have a bunch of other things. And if decisions have to be made, then, you know, you might be some, if you have need a, uh, thin patch of ice to get from one to the other, you have it.
Right.
If not, they'll just be like a value decision. But, you know, you don't have to make any decision on that today. And obviously, like, conceptually, yeah, absolutely, one-time revenue sources. But if you needed a bridge, if if there was some revenue sources in the future that you're waiting for, then it would kind of make sense.
Yeah, and I think there's there's a couple of different things we can play with for sure. But I just want to make sure because, you know, I'm sure that.
Tonight.
Yeah.
Because Lisa's, well, again, this is based on whatever the the board votes, but based on the feedback with Lisa, it seems as though our, you know, potential, uh, partnership with Hanover may not be as viable as it looked like it would be on paper, uh, for a number of different reasons. And so for tonight, in order to give Lisa the direction that we need to give her and have her move forward to post that position, the board needs to make a decision about whether we want to lean in the direction of increasing those hours. And and as Eric suggested, we'll have to figure out how the sausage is going to be made, you know, in terms of funding up the road, which we have to do for everything anyway. Um, but, um, so is there any? Okay, so I will entertain a motion. Um, and Ms. Green, are you suggesting thirty-two or thirty-five, just to be clear?
Thirty-two.
Okay. I will entertain a motion that, uh, for the replacement of Mr. White, although a replacement seems like a lame term. Um, we will be moving, we will be posting for thirty-two-hour veteran services officer.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, with the salary to be, uh, the, the?
Five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five thousand.
Okay, fifty-five thousand. Um, and do we have a range or are we going to be right at fifty-five? What if we get somebody who's experienced? I don't want to box you in. That's why I'm asking while we're making the motion.
Um.
Let's tell them the numbers.
We could certainly, we could certainly look at a range, Eric, right?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so what would the the high?
Can I make a point here? Your number there is fifty-six.
Oh, this was, this was the salary range.
If you want to go that high, fifty to sixty.
That's a good point.
Yeah, whatever.
That's a full-time though. Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Okay.
Maybe you make it up to ten.
So why don't we say? Do we want to say up to sixty thousand dollars? And we, obviously, uh, we want to be as judicious as possible. But, you know, but if we get somebody with amazing background who wants to do the thirty-two hours in Hanson, you know?
I would just, just, Eric, do you think, I mean, I see you nodding, but you you think that that's not going to stretch it too far? I mean, it's only.
No, no, because as a percentage of like the whole budget, it's really not. And, you know, you you've all heard saying a penny rises and a pound foolish. So if you get somebody that's inexperienced and they're trying to figure out what to do, but if you get somebody that's experienced and aggressive, that could probably pay for itself. So for an extra incremental cost of five thousand a year, ten thousand a year, not a big job. Basically, make a decision, you know, overall picture, we can absorb it in. So just make a policy decision that that's what you want to do. And then we can work out how we're going to, you know, you know, finance it. And we know the options leave in the budget, but we do have an option to make a bridge or whatever, so.
Okay. All right, so this is probably one of the most convoluted motions we've ever taken. We've circled the the, you know, wagons here. So thirty-two hours for a range of fifty-five to sixty for the position, uh, that Ms. Green is going to post. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, fantastic. Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you, Eric. Um, and.
Looking for your application.
Lisa.
Tomorrow.
Lisa and Lynn, can you let Ann Donner know that we're just running a little bit behind? Because I feel a little bit rude that we, because I think she was supposed to be at the top of the hour and we've clearly strayed from that. Um, so I think we'll probably get to her within the half hour. Um, so we're just, uh, moving things along. Um, so, thanks, Tim. Um, Mrs. Collins, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you. I would like to echo how sad I am to see Tim go. Well, thank you for having me. Happy twenty twenty-three. I thought I would just review a little of what happened last year at the center. Um, and as Tim alluded to, we do a lot with our residents in terms of Medicare, explaining Medicare, Medicare one oh one, for those who are looking, um, or considering retiring at some point, um, to our crazy, uh, time period in the fall during open enrollment. So I thought I would let you know, uh, during the open enrollment period, which is, um, mid-October to early December, um, I saw a hundred and four people as a Shine counselor, um, to help them look at the current, um, ways in which they're supplementing Medicare, uh, and trying to identify ways that they can save some money. Oftentimes, that is moving from one prescription drug plan to another. Um, and we very strongly encourage our seniors to seek out a Shine counselor each year during that period, um, even if they think things are going well. Um, we want to try and get the least, the the most bang for their buck, basically. So, um, in the hundred and four residents that I saw, uh, seventeen additional residents I did Shine counseling for on the phone during that open enrollment period, we saved, oh, here, a couple of glasses, uh, forty-five thousand seventy-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Wow.
Um, so that gave each person an average of above three hundred and seventy dollars, a little bit more, um, for for going into twenty twenty-three with their their new options. Um, in addition to that, throughout the rest of the year, um, I saw well over, what did I have? I had saw a an additional hundred and seventy-one residents. And most of those folks come during during the other periods of the year when they are contemplating, uh, retirement. Um, so that, and then I have others, other folks that will come when they need to or they think they may be eligible for, um, uh, Mass Health or some of the programs that. The nice thing is that anybody that walks through the door, we can take a moment to, um, try and, uh, qualify them to see if they are eligible for any of the savings programs that Mass Health has, so. Um, also, we have seen twenty-two families since Fuel Assistance started, uh, November first, a huge increase. Um, most of our younger families are doing it online now, which is a great, um, it's a it's a great time saver for them, truly. And that started during COVID. Um, so one good thing from COVID. Um, and Linda Mulry, who, um, joined us in September as our outreach coordinator, she jumped right in with a little training and has been, um, taking all the Fuel Assistance applications and has done a fabulous job. Um, I'd like to take just a moment to to, um, talk about her personality and the way in which, um, I hear her interact with, um, our seniors. And she's just the perfect fit. She truly, truly is compassionate, caring. Um, a woman called today has recently lost her spouse. And, um, I just, I was in my office and doing my own thing and I could hear Linda. And it was just, if I had lost my spouse, that would be the person that I would like to speak with. And while speaking with this person, she was able to encourage her to do different things, come into the center, what can we do, how can we assist you? Um, and that's exactly what we try and do. So she was absolutely the perfect, uh, choice for that position. Um, I would like to take a minute, as we are being broadcast, to remind people, uh, if I could, just real quickly, of the criteria for Mass Health, uh, not Mass Health, I'm sorry, Fuel Assistance. Um, some people think that they are not eligible. They think they make too much. And if I could just take a minute, so a family of one, one single person can make forty-two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars, up to that amount. A family of two, fifty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. A family of three, six thousand, I'm sorry, sixty-eight thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. Family of four, eighty-one thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars. And a family of five, ninety-four thousand six hundred and ten dollars. So I would encourage anybody who's listening, think about those figures. If you think that you might be eligible, please apply for it, whether it be online, through self-help in Brockton, or you can give the center a call. And we'd be glad to help.
Mary, is there a, because I, you know, now we're into January and you hear people, oh, it's probably past. I probably can't get help, blah, 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 blah. Are there any deadlines that people have to?
Yes, the end, the end of, the end of April, actually, Laura. And last year, it was extended. So, um, and I will remind people, sometimes during, throughout the winter, after people have received their benefit, quite often, more money is placed into an account by the federal, you know, by the federal government. They may see fit to add more. And then that in turn kind of, um, gives us a little bit of the person a little extra. Um, it's been a really tough year for people. They're really struggling. Um, and on that note, I will encourage people to stop at the center. If you're out during the week and and you have five minutes, please come through. We have people donating all the time. You never know what you're going to find there. And Shaw's is just wonderful with like day-old things, uh, day-old breads and rolls. And if somebody can save three dollars on a, on a, you know, a loaf of bread by picking it up at the center, then that's three dollars that they can put towards something, maybe, you know, unfortunately, fuel. Um, so I would encourage that. Uh, let me see. Oh, the the final thing about Linda is that she will be taking the Shine, um, training in the springtime. And Shine is what I took to become certified, um, to advise people on Medicare benefits. So Linda will be taking that in the spring, as well as two volunteers who have shown interest over the last year. And traditionally, Shine counselors have always been, uh, volunteers until you don't have a volunteer any longer, like I did six years ago and took the training. Very happy that I did, very, very pleased that I did. Um, and I am really excited about this. Uh, Friday, I got word from the, um, let me give you the correct, South Shore Elder Mental Health Consortium, who has been given, uh, been granted a grant to be able to offer councils on aging, masters level, second-year masters level social working students from, um, Bridgewater University to provide counseling, starting in the fall. Um, it will be part of their curriculum. They have plenty of oversight, uh, but they will be able to provide some counseling, some mental health counseling for our seniors at the center, as well as they will be offering, um, uh, classes, workshops, uh, to our seniors. So I am so happy about this. This is something that sadly, you know, very few senior centers can afford to provide, but very, very necessary, very, very necessary. Um, I will give you an example because I like to bring in people because that's what we're about. But a woman that I meet with, um, in her nineties is trying to deal with the aftermath of losing her daughter to COVID last year. And, you know, a woman that gets into her nineties, the last thing she thinks of is losing a child. And, um, you know, I would much rather, as much as I can listen and, you know, advise in to a certain degree, um, I think would be a wonderful opportunity for, um, students as well as for our seniors to get the benefit of their knowledge. So very excited. That would start in the fall, in the in the fall semester. Um, and I think I should end up with some thank yous, if that's okay. And I I'm I'm not like at the Emmy Awards or anything, but, um, things that we're grateful for. Um, last year, and first, well, I shouldn't say first and foremost, South Shore Botec, um, Charlie Baker and Carrie Glass were instrumental in building the wall, um, putting up a wall at the center, um, so that we have more office space. And most of you know, office space is so necessary, especially if there's a door that you can shut for confidentiality. And the two real important, um, aspects were things that go on at the center, the Fuel Assistance and the Shine. But everybody needs to be able to have a quiet place that they can shut the door and talk to the person that they need to. And that's something that we were lacking. Um, we were so glad to bring Linda on in the outreach position, but then we didn't have a really good place for her to be where she could talk with people confidentially, confidentially. So that I'm so grateful for. Um, also, the Hanson Community Christmas approached me, oh, a couple of weeks before Christmas, just out of the blue, and asked if there was something that they could do for a couple of our seniors. And so, yes, they did. They followed through. And, um, we are great, I'm just going to pass the word along from the people that received them. They are incredibly grateful. I'd like to thank, um, the Hanson Action Club, who is in partnership with the Kiwanis Club of Hanson. This is like the third year, I believe, that they have done socks for seniors. And it's through Bombas Socks.
Yes.
So you buy one Bombas, you get one free? Well, we got the free ones. It was, it was over, over fifty pair came. So we were able to give, um, to our folks that get Meals on Wheels and some of our other seniors, and they're good socks, so I hear, so.
They're amazing socks.
They're really.
They're not just good, they're amazing socks.
They're amazing. What are they, twenty dollars a pair or something? So very grateful for that and warm and cozy toes as a result, so, just too poor. Um, I'd like to thank our friends group, um, at the Hanson Senior Center for their generosity throughout the year. They raised, uh, in addition to, um, funding our annual Veterans Breakfast and special entertainment throughout the year, um, they provided filled baskets for our veterans on Veterans Day and very special gifts for the folks that receive, um, uh, Meals on Wheels at Christmas time. And they do everything with such heart and passion. If I could bottle them, it would be fabulous. But they are an incredible group and we are so fortunate to have them kind of as our financiers or, you know, just behind the wind beneath our wings, shall I say. Um, and then I would like to just thank all the workers, all the staff and the volunteers at the center. We are blessed to have the volunteers that we have. We wouldn't be able to do half of what we do. And, um, they provide, uh, it creates such a warm and welcoming feeling in that building that, um, I'm just so happy to walk in every day and so proud to be with them and work with them. And I thank you.
Well, we thank you. You are amazing and we always feel grateful to have you in that role.
I appreciate that. I I I smile on my way to work every day, so I am blessed. I am.
Did anybody have any questions or?
Just thank you very much.
Mr. Hickey, you're controlling yourself over there. What's happening?
Mary talks about other people.
Yes.
Um, and we all know I'm the liaison down there, but, and she would never say the stuff that she does. And, um, she's just an amazing woman and.
Thank you.
You know, I, you know, with the stuff, I I couldn't explain it. I, obviously, now I'm getting choked up, but, um, she's just wonderful, so.
Thank you.
I mean.
You're almost old enough to officially join us. So the men's, so the men's club say.
Well, George said, uh, we could be auxiliary members.
Oh.
So we're working on that.
Oh, boy.
We'll see how that goes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mary. Really appreciate it.
And thank you all for your support, especially with the outreach position last year. That has made such an impact already, so thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, we've got, um, Mary Ann DiMascio here. And so we had two items that involve, um, Mary Ann. So once again, we'll kind of bump things around and then we'll get to, um, Ann Donner, who's been very patiently, uh, holding for the strategic planning update. Um, so we've got Green Hanson would like to use the town green on April twenty-ninth from eight to two for the annual cleanup, green up in the morning and an Earth Fest event after that. Um, did anybody have any questions about that?
Okay.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So listen, I'll second it.
Yeah.
We may not do the Earth Fest. We're looking, it's a lot of work and we, um, we're trying to find someone who would be in charge of it and we don't have someone, so I think we might just do.
Well, I think, um, to hedge your bets, um, it might be best if we approved it anyway. And if you don't end up using it, then, you know, then so be it. But at least you'll have reserved the day. Not that I think anybody's going to be, you know, fighting you for it, but, um, but you just never know. Um, all right, so I will entertain a motion to, um, approve Green Hanson using the Town Hall green on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
So old.
Okay.
Second.
On favor? Okay, great. And then we have accept donation to the Hanson Conservation Commission for purchasing materials for future bog bridges that will be located on Hanson Conservation Properties. Did you want to say anything about that? Or, I mean, it's rather self.
We just want to donate the bog bridges of the conservation.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I just want, as a member of the Conservation Commission, I'd also like to thank you very much for your, that offer. It's going to be, it's really, I don't know if, is this is poor meadow that you're thinking?
It said bog bridges, but God knows that anybody that walks out there, particularly recently, there's a need for bog bridges.
Yeah, really.
Even if you have, you know.
Didn't need them last year. As I moved.
There you go. Okay, great. All in favor? All right, fantastic. All right, thank you, Mary Ann. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to our strategic planning update. And Ms. Donner, are you on the phone?
I am.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm sorry that we took a left turn and then a right turn and here we are. So thanks for, thanks for being so patient. We appreciate it. So as you will recall, we had our strategic planning session back in late November. And to lay the foundation for that, we had a citizen survey that was sent out several months before that. We also had Ms. Donner interview department heads, us, various other stakeholders, I guess we'll say, to kind of get an idea of what were people generally thinking, the priorities for the strategic plan needed to be. Now, just a reminder, this is not a document or even an effort that's set in stone. This is a placeholder and then it's an organic document going forward. We're constantly going to be updating this to reflect where we're at. But we needed to start somewhere and that's why we brought Ms. Donner in, was to help us figure out where we were at, where we wanted to go in this moment in time. And then we'll, we'll keep working on it. So Anne, I don't know if you were going to kind of distill what we had talked about at the, at the planning session?
Yeah, sure. What I, what I would do is focus on what sort of the key strategic areas that were developed as part of that, that are convening in November and to lay out a framework for, to like pursue those, those goals. So if that's okay, so I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to do, I'm going to do a screen share. And I'm going to go right here. And, okay, and then I'm going to play from current slide. Okay, so can you see my screen? Okay, so I'm just going to do, show it and, okay, I'm just going to start. Okay, so it says draft because it is a draft and it doesn't reflect everyone's feedback on it yet. But it's in a form that I hope is fairly easy to, you know, to edit going forward. And that's just a picture that I took when I was standing on the stage at Camp Kiwanis of the room. And it's, it's just, it was, I think it is a great photo because it is very representative of the kinds of discussions that were, that happened that day and just the work that everyone put into it. And I want to thank everyone for their dedication that day, from the organization of it and the support that you provided me. But I, I hope that those who participated thought it was productive. So there were five strategic areas that were identified in the, in public facilities, public programming and recreation, economic development, citizen engagement and town administration. And what I want to say is that these strategic priorities, the statements or goals under each of them are very reasonable. And, and they are, they don't take away from like the day to day business of strategically what the town, town government does. But these are particular areas that, that we came up with, I say collectively, that deserved, you know, sort of constant sort of attention and to make, you know, to make progress. So, so the first strategic priority, I'm going to read them out loud because I don't know if the, those watching can actually, they probably are not familiar with them. But for public facilities, the goal was to assess and improve Hanson's public facilities to meet the needs of citizens and town departments. For public programming and recreation, the goal was to develop a robust program of recreational and educational opportunities for citizens of all ages. In the area of economic development, it was to initiate and promote economic development to mitigate tax increases and provide first-class services to Hanson citizens. For citizen engagement, it was involve more people in town government by filling volunteer positions, increasing town meeting attendance. And for the town administration, it was to make town employment more attractive to qualified candidates. Now, for, I just also want to pick up on what the chairwoman said in that the input or where this grew from, there was like, there's an evolution of these goals which came out of those, one out of the citizen survey and out of the discussions, you know, with the select board, with the department heads. And the goals really reflect a synthesis of what can we do in response to the feedback that we've heard and the priorities that we've heard people think value. So the way that these are set up is that for each goal, there are like high-level initiatives. And, and so for public facilities, the initiative, so if you, you know, in order to achieve that goal, there are three, three things that were identified. One was to develop a public facilities matrix, just to understand the state of like, you know, what, what do we have? And then to, for the select board, you know, again, this is like, you know, these are, these are initiatives that can happen when they happen. But to convene a summit to identify and prioritize the public facilities needs. And the third initiative was to improve internal and public communication regarding public facilities projects. The outcomes, or what we hope to achieve in five years was to hire a public facilities manager, secure funding for priority projects and to have projects completed or in construction, you know, or in some, you know, so that's sort of the, you know, so at the end of the five years, that, that these are the outcomes that are envisioned. For each of these, and I'm not going to read them all, is that for every goal or, you know, priority, there are stakeholders. So it's sort of asking ourselves, who needs to be involved? Who needs to be at the table? Key stakeholders to, to make these things happen. And so for each goal, we've got the stakeholders, the key stakeholders that were identified. This is not like a finite list, but that, to, in order for that to happen, these are, these are the entities that need to be at the table, including citizens. And that citizens goes across the board. And then for the resources, I'm just going to describe what that category is. The resources really are, who is, what do we need to think about? Like what are the tools that we need to achieve that initiative? So sometimes that's people, sometimes that's funding. And, you know, sometimes that is data, you know. So for this, you know, for example, the library strategic plan would be an important resource. The 2016 facilities review and capital planning budget would be an important resource. So that's sort of, in looking at that, you think, okay, we need these things in order to achieve that goal. And for each of them, there needs to be someone who is, you know, who's kind of the quarterback, who's ensuring that these things happen. And so just to, to put in people as a placeholder, I took the liberty, and of course, these can change, of assigning the various select board members who chair these particular areas. It could be somebody else, but we wanted, I wanted to make sure that we represented that there is a person, an individual that is, who's kind of the point person on these initiatives. Okay, so, so that's public facilities. For public programming and recreation, the goal again is to develop a robust program of recreational and educational opportunities for citizens of all ages. And there was a, there was a lot of, there were many great ideas that came out of this, this little, the work group that was working on this. And the initiatives included to create a paid recreational staff director, with or without, associated with the commission. But it's recognizing that there's, you know, there's the commission, but to say that there's a lot of work to be done and there needs to be a way to implement or someone who is spearheading like the implementation of a fairly robust agenda. To prioritize offerings that the town provides for recreational and educational programming through a citizen, through citizen input. And so one of the ideas was to have a survey, to do a benchmark study of other towns' recreation departments to see what they offer. Develop a budget or business plan with projected revenue and expenses that could be realized through the programming. And the expenses includes like staff or in equipment and materials. To identify funding through grants and external funds and to publish a town recreation catalog. Now, if we do all these things, the outcomes that we would like to see include an increase in the number of new program offerings, the number of people who participate by various demographics. And then perhaps a self, you know, a self, aspirational, self-sustaining program that covers expenses through fees and outside funding. And, and most importantly, positive feedback from the citizens who participate in the programs. So, and on that, you know, lead, you'll see who I have down there again. Select board member, you know, Ed Heel and Frank Malisi, you know, seemed like reasonable to think that they might be project leads. But again, these were suggestions. Economic development, the goal is to initiate and promote economic development to mitigate tax increases, provide first-class services to Hanson citizens. The initiatives that were identified were to revitalize the TIF and clarify Main Street projects for TIF, identifying attract target businesses, develop marketing and communications plan, review zoning bylaws with an eye towards business and businesses and creating new zones, and to work on ecotourism and green space on Main Street. The five-year outcomes, you know, that were anticipated or hoped for are the issuance of TIFs. And just to say, TIFs, you know, for those who are watching, it's tax incremental financing, increase in business certificates, increase in traffic and MBTA use. So, and I want to say that traffic includes like pedestrian traffic, but there's just more like activity that's generated through the economic development, increase in business tax revenue and increase in the number of building permits. Okay, I'm just going to, and I'll ask, I'll answer questions after I'm finished here. Citizen engagement, this was also a really interesting conversation. They were all interesting, but it was the creativity and the, you know, sort of the thinking outside the box really was evident in this conversation. And the goal is to involve more people in town government by filling volunteer positions and increasing town meeting attendance. So, and part of that came out of a discussion of that there are volunteer positions that are going unfilled because people aren't, you know, people aren't stepping up for lots of reasons. And this, this team really identified some of those reasons and came up with these initiatives. What the first was to develop and publicize a table of board and commission openings, to create nominations and a vetting process. And part of that is to have, you know, clear job descriptions for committees, boards and commissions and applications that, you know, for each. To have a mentorship program for new board members and committee members, to provide social media training, conduct annual recruitment and retention review, develop a pipeline of new members through alternate and associate membership and install outdoor electronic, electronic message board to publicize when the town meeting is happening. Some of the goals are to fill 100% of the committee openings with qualified individuals. And one of the outcomes as a result of that is fair, balanced decision-making, reduce the number of vacancies by 100% and to increase, increase the town meeting attendance. And the fifth strategic priority is town administration. And, you know, and so the goal is to make town employment more attractive to qualified candidates. And the three initiatives that were identified were to simplify the hiring process, establish HR department. And part of the thinking there was to explore participating in a regional model or contractor service to manage the HR component and to develop a competitive compensation package. The five-year outcomes are to establish, establishment of HR department. And in the goal, the second goal was that employees hired in 2023 are retained after five years. So those are the five strategic priorities. And so what I want to share with you is really what does a dashboard? Like how do we keep track of this in a simple way? And this is a, a template or an example of a very simple reporting method, which is one page, which is purposely brief, that can be shared, you know, with the community through the website and social media and, and gives periodic updates on how we're doing toward achieving those five-year outcome of the key metrics. So it's, again, it's meant to be, I promised everyone I spoke with at the beginning that in order for something to be effective, in order for this like strategic plan or any kind of action plan to, you know, to, to be implemented, it can't be long and it has to be simply reported. So it's so, and it there's, so the idea of the dashboard is exactly that. It's like a snapshot of how we're doing at various points in time. And then, so through, in working, you know, with Ms. Green and Ms. Fitzgerald Kemmett, we came up with, there's three, like for 2023 and for each year following, there would be a reporting schedule. And so that by, you know, March 7th, May 30th and December 5th were periods of time in which there'd be a public report of how these initiatives are, you know, are, are doing, what the status is. But most importantly is that it's a tool. And as the chairwoman said, is that it's dynamic and things, sometimes life happens. And so it's also an opportunity to, to share like what's, what's working, what's not working and to, and to gain, gather input from, you know, from the public, from others on what we might do to have a course correction or maybe that goal should be changed. But it's, it is a dynamic, meant to be a dynamic document. So with that, I'm going to do a stop, stop share and entertain any comments or questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, you know, I'm looking at all of the great work that's been done and I'm saying, we got to get on with it here. We got to get popping and make some progress because we had, you know, it was a wonderful experience. And I have to say, in the six years Jim and I have been a select person, it was the first time that we had seen a cross-pollination of all different department heads, committee heads, all kinds of different talents and abilities and experience. And everybody was there for one purpose, which was to try to think about, where did, you know, the direction the town's going in. Instead of everybody just kind of haphazardly doing their own thing, you know, let's try to actually have a vision that we can try to share together. And I, I really felt an incredible amount of positive energy. And I left feeling very, you know, very positive about all the wonderful volunteers that we've got in town and, and employees that we've got in town. But, you know, when you were just going through the slides, I was like, oh, boy, we're already slacking here. You know, I, I will say, we have made some progress. So for instance, on the communication one, we did hire Capital Strategic Solutions to help us work on our website and on social media posts. And so, so I feel like that's some form of. The economic development, there's a, there's a committee that specifically is working on economic development. So a lot of what was there were things that were already in progress. So those two, I feel like are really kind of already in progress. So those two, I feel like are really kind of already in progress. I, I feel like our capital improvement committee's been doing an amazing job of, you know, really circling the wagons on what we need for capital improvements. Clearly, we haven't done everything that was on the public facilities, you know, checklist, but, but I think we're further along than we would have been at this time last year, you know, honestly. And then in terms of the employees, we've certainly had some turnover, and Ms. Green is working on hiring people, and I guess we'll find out whether we're successful in retaining them five years from now. But I think, you know, what do you guys want to do to move this? We gotta move it. You know, we need to move this forward because, you know, what, what I'm, and I'm, you know, part of this too, is, you know, we talk every meeting about sort of tactical things that we need to get done, and we get that done, and we do a great job. There's no question about that. You know, we're chugging along, we're talking, doing dog hearings, talking about veterans, all this stuff. That's all amazing, it's great, and it's part of what we do. But we gotta take it to that next level. And in order to take it to the next level, we really gotta put things into gear here and start working on that.
I think one of the first things we need to do is we need to get that chart going of vacancies on committees and what needs to be filled. We need to do that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think we're filled now, but.
Are we filled?
Yeah, I think we're at 100, but, but that doesn't mean that the rest of that work, which was the descriptions and then getting to the point where it's not like, oh, you've got a pulse, we'll take you on the committee. You know, and I joke, but not really.
I just catch your inspiration.
Yeah. You know, we've got great volunteers, but you know, there are towns that have got lists of people who are volunteering, and they're literally interviewing people as though it's a job because it is a job. And different people have got different abilities, you know? So it may be that somebody, you know, that, you know, is applying for conservation, we say, we appreciate you applying for conservation, but you know, we really could use you on the historic commission with your background, you know, that type of a thing. So I think that's aspirational, but, but I am proud to say that this board, in, in all the years we, again, have been on the board, we had many, many, many openings. And the list, if you had been reading the public announcements in past years, you would have been reading, you know, five, six, seven openings that never seemed to get filled. That is not the case. So something positive has happened in that regard, and I feel good about that. Mr. Weeks? Oh, you seemed like you were.
Oh, I'm always, I'm always able and willing to say something. So since you asked me, I think, you know, one of the things that we might want to start adjusting, and this would be like the maiden voyage of changing a goal, is if, you know, once we go from, you know, 100% filled vacancies for, for the different committees and whatnot, I think a goal that we should aspire to is to do exactly what you were just saying, but we, we should, you know, aspire to make it competitive so that we're not just filling vacancies. Now we're trying to make the vacancies a competitive edge. And then also, look at the diversity of who we have representing. Because, you know, it's, it's no surprise to me that Frank popped up on, as a lead because he's on every single committee, undoubtedly so. He's one of the most brilliant people here, incredibly goal-driven, there's nothing but positive things to say. So I'm just gonna, you know, use him as an example. If he's on five different committees, and then there's another person who's always here, he's an honorary select person.
Yep.
He's on five different committees, Ed, you're on a thousand different committees. Everybody, you know, everybody here is on a whole bunch of committees. So how do we diversify that, make it competitive?
Get fresh-blooded.
Right. And then keep the vacancies at 100%. So I'm thinking, you know, we might want to try and add steps to the goals within that five-year plan.
So how do we move this forward so that we're not just circling the drain and talking about the same thing three months from now, or on, or on March 7th when we've got our first official check-in?
I think it needs to be a line item on our agenda that we talk about, you know, at least with a little, a quick status update. What do you guys, what have you guys done since the last meeting? What's, what's going on?
I like that. And, and to build on that, it did occur to me, Ms. McDowell, Ms. Green, that somehow we no longer had committee updates on our agenda. And I'm not quite sure when that dropped off, but I would like to make sure that people have got an opportunity to have committee updates on there.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I had Mary come in for her update, I didn't think about committee updates.
No, well, no, I mean, so we had, we used to have a standing agenda item for the selectman committee update, so, because we'll reach on various committees or subcommittees or what have you, and there may or may not be any, you know, progress, but, and if there isn't any progress, then we just say, there really wasn't anything, you know, monumental to report, pass it on to the next guy. But, you know, for instance, you know, like to hear what's going on at the senior center or capital improvement, whatever, you know, fill in the blanks. Because we are doing work beyond being at this meeting, and I'd like to hear what you guys are all working on. And of course, we can't do that without violating open meeting law if more than one of us talks to the other one. So this would be the place to do that. So.
I, I agree with you both. You know, we have made a good start, and, you know, we talked either last week or the week before about reviews. And this is the first board that's going to get that done where it goes down the line. And if I may, could you post, on the side, you had each little slide on the side of your screen, because there was one that I wanted to go back to.
Do you remember which one it was?
It is number 10.
Okay. Give me one second.
Sure. Yep. That's it right there. Where we are already way ahead because we didn't want to talk about an update until May. We have the update next week, and here is our guideline, whether it goes to just us or the other committees that were at that meeting. I mean, and that, that is a perfect setup to, you know, to go along, I think it was with number two, but, you know, if everybody just wrote what their, their top, you know, priority was for each group, and almost like a review, you put them all together and check them out and say, okay, well, we can work on this, this, and this, and that will keep the ball rolling. I, I thought that was the best slide that I saw. Thank you.
And, no, it's, well, it's, it kind of makes it really like, simple.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
I mean, except the, the one other picture where I was in it. I like that one better, but this one would be second.
And Ms. Green, it does seem to me as though a number of these are things that are gonna fall to you. For instance, you know, the job descriptions, the public facilities matrix. So I'm wondering if between now and either our next meeting or the following meeting, if you might not go through and identify the things that you feel would be on your plate to take care of, so that, so that then we're able to distill from that what the remainder of the committee members need to do. And I'm certainly not suggesting that you have to do all of these immediately. The other thing that I think we need to help give you guidance on is what we see as the priorities out of all of those things that would fall to you.
Okay.
Did anybody, I know, I think your name was misspelled.
Yes, it was.
Anne, Anne.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'll appreciate this. Her name is spelt exactly as yours is.
Oh, okay. That, that's great.
And, Mr. Heel, did you have something?
I just didn't know if you happened to have all the, those sheets that we had while we were doing it, you know, our, our note-taking and stuff. Is that something you could send a picture of or something? Because.
I could try.
There was so much.
There's some good stuff, yeah. I could, what I could do is take pictures of them by category, like by their category.
I think you tried to pull out the stuff and put it on those, those slides.
Oh, yeah.
But you're saying there was a lot more detail in there?
There was a lot more.
There's a lot, yeah. Synthesizing it was sort of, yeah, there's a lot of material on that, but I'd be happy to take pictures of those.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that was great.
All right. I mean, like I said, we did, that was an amazing initiative, and now let's not have this gather dust on the shelf and not do anything with it, which we, we committed to not let happen, so. All right, Ian, well, thanks for keeping us honest. Thanks for synthesizing all of this. And what are our next steps with you? Are you sort of gracefully bowing out and, and then we'll touch base with you when we need you, or?
That's entirely up to you. And I, like, I think that having, like, like, working with the document, I'm just gonna do the stop the share here a second, get back. And, and figuring out like what, you know, again, it's sort of a, it's to shape it as you, as you, you've done like the hard work, and it's to utilize it in a way that provides accountability and keeps the, you know, the, the higher, you know, like the, the goals, you know, at the forefront, and not to lose sight of them, and then to have a way to track them. And there might be a time when you think, gee, we really, like, we think about that retreat and what we're able to do, and one of the things that was interesting about it is that everyone was solving, solving for a problem.
Right.
And that's where a lot of the creativity came in. Because we sort of presented what we learned from the citizen survey and everything else and said, okay, this is, you know, how would, how do we address this? And that's where these priorities came out of. So there might be a time when it might be helpful to have another opportunity to, to step back and reflect and tackle something else. So, and I'd be.
I'm wondering if we might be able, Lisa and I could set up some time with you to talk about, you know, how you've handled this with other towns, and, you know, where we might want to deal you in and deal you out, and, you know, what our options might be and all of that, and then we can bring it back to the board.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, my apologies for keeping you waiting so long.
No worries, no, no worries, and it's a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Right back at you. Thank you, man.
Bye-bye, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay. Boy, that really filled me with both trepidation and pride at the same time, because, you know, we, we did some great work, but boy, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. Yes, Mr. Hickey.
But didn't we get, was Anne Hyde with the grant?
Anne, Ms. Green?
No.
No, she was free cash.
Okay.
An article at town meeting.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I was just thinking, well, you know, you came up with that great idea, and I mean, I would like to keep her on board. And it's not something that, say, the town planner or the building inspector could do some of this stuff, where she could actually keep the board on our toes with different ideas that.
Press, press, press. How are you guys doing? How are you guys doing?
Right. I mean, I think we've got a great start on this, and it is a five-year, you know, program, but just, you know.
Accountability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think it's great that you're gonna set up.
So we'll see what she comes up with, and we'll, we'll, we'll come back to you guys and let you know.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like she's doing a hard sell, like you must use me going for, you know, like, she's trying to give us the tools to do it, but, but it's a lot. It's a lot of moving parts there, so. Okay, so we're moving on to Camp Kewaunee Commission. And Ms. Green, we are intrigued by the selling wood at Camp Kewaunee proposal because they're not really sure what it means, and we're hoping you can enlighten us.
Yes. So this, this is some of the subject matters that the commission undertook at their last meeting, and the way it was, it was suggested to me is when people rent the cabins, whether it be weddings or whatever type of event, they basically are given, they take logs and use the fire pits. And so they had, the commission had thought of ways to increase revenues, so they thought about selling the wood rather than just giving it to people.
To campers?
To campers, yes. Also, what that, what that will do is, we don't, you, you don't really want campers bringing in wood. Any campground, basically anywhere, really prohibits people bringing in wood because you don't know what type of, if the tree is diseased, what type of parasites or pest are going, because you bring that in and it spreads to your trees.
Yep.
So they had spoken about this, you know, possibility of selling the wood. However, there's been a couple of little road bumps regarding the formalities with this as far as the municipality selling wood. How would that be handled as far as the, any sales tax or, you know, turnovers, whether it be cash and things like that? So I did, we did reach out to our auditors for any type of input, and they suggested we reach out to town council, which we did. Town council approached us as a procurement type of surplus supplies and how we, you know, how we, how we dispose of surplus. However, firewood does not reach the level of $10,000. So a suggestion was that they add a fee to the rental agreement for the cabins for firewood.
That makes sense because one of the things, you know, Mr. Hickey had mentioned, which is, was a valid point. As you recall, one of the audit points that came up of Camp Kewaunee years ago, but, you know, would still be valid now, is that handling of the cash. It just is, it's verboten, and, and not just at Camp Kewaunee, really, any town entity. You're better to just stay away from the cash, it's a recipe for disaster. And, you know, it just can't be tracked and audited as easily as checks and, and credit cards can, so.
So there was a suggestion made through town council to have a fee added to the rental agreement, and this would be, and again, the, the commission needs to revisit this at another meeting, but they will talk about what, how much the fee would be, and I suggested possibly have it on every rental agreement, every single one, regardless of whether they use the wood or not. Every, every rental will have a firewood fee, and whatever fee they come up with, you know, here's the wood that you can use, and then whatever other wood would be, because there's two different areas. That's kind of the best way to do it and ensures people don't bring in their own wood.
And I, I like your comment about the, and I don't like the comment, but I like the thought process that we would not allow invasive, you know, potentially invasive, you know, insects and what have you. So are they thinking of updating the rental agreement to include a provision that excludes the ability to bring in wood from the outside?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Yes, that, that would, that would be included in the agreement. Of course, they have to revisit this and, and rediscuss it.
Because they haven't discussed this. This has just came from council, this didn't go through.
Right. This, this. This hasn't not gone to the commission today, this just came through town council, so I'm updating you. So the commission will talk about it at one of their meetings.
Okay, all right. So you don't, no need for us to vote on anything there? And then you've got implementing a military discount?
So again, the commission talked about, you know, implementing a military discount for events for, I don't know exactly what the discount would fall under, if it's off the total amount of the, an event or just the rental fee. I gather they will provide me with more information on that once they work out the formalities.
And I, that, that would be great, and I think I'd also want to know what the vetting process would be to, you know, to make sure that we're not getting played. I, I have no problem legitimately giving it to people who have had a military background, and I think it's a great idea, and I applaud them for it. But I, I would want to make sure that we're being judicious about how that policy is implemented.
That's one thing also, like, is it my uncle's event, or my grandfather's event, or do I have to be at that? That, that ties into the vetting process.
Yeah. And, and, you know, because I'm, I don't know what kind of documentation they're gonna require, or is it just a, I make the representation, you know, I, I don't know. I just get concerned because then you've got stolen valor situation, you know, I, and so, something that is well-intentioned could get extremely out of control if we don't have the right rules of engagement in place.
Then those will be, those will be items that they will need to work out.
Okay. And then the hosting the bridal show on 5/7, I assume that's already happening since they're advertising it already on Facebook, so I assume that they approved it already.
Just let us know about.
Okay.
And also, Madam Chair, if I may, item number five.
Yes, I was, I noticed that I had skipped over that. So let's circle back to update on draft fraud risk policy. We had some questions for you at our last meeting.
Yeah, so I actually would like to ask if, if we could possibly table that because I did make some modifications and revisions to the policy.
Okay.
Based on our, our town accountant making some suggestions of what, what do employees do? So I've made some revisions, but you unfortunately didn't get a copy of the draft in the, in your packet, so I'd like to.
That's fine. Can we put it on for next week? Do you think you'll be, well, good, I'm glad that Eric was able to chime in and give some feedback. That's, that's awesome.
Yes, and I've made those revisions, so actually, so that would be on the 2/7 agenda.
Okay, great.
That, that's wonderful, thank you.
And we've got a one-day liquor license for 2/9. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have minutes for open session of January 24th, 2023. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I did not get a copy of the medicine.
Did we not get a?
I don't see it in the package either.
Was that not in our materials?
No, I just, wow.
You know what, it's not in our packet, but I think it was attached to the email you sent to us. Okay, you know. Okay, you know what? We can, yeah, let's, just out of an abundance of caution, let's kick that can down the road till next week. And that would bring us to you, Ms. Green, to the town administrator report.
All right. Madam Chair, vice chairman of the board. So if you remember, a few weeks back, we had a discussion on town planner came forward to talk about the Mast D O T tip program, project, and the challenges with the Abington-Rockland water main. So I had attended a meeting as well as our town planner that included Mast D O T, the Mast D O T tip team for this project, and it also included Old Colony Planning Council and a number of our, our dedicated legislative partners and officials.
Can you specifically tell us who attended that?
Yes, yes, I am. The, basically, our representative, State Representative Josh Cutler worked with coordinating to have, based on the challenge that we faced with this particular water main, State Representative Josh Cutler went to work immediately and coordinated to have all of our legislative partners, elected legislative officials join this meeting, and that included State Representative Josh Cutler and his staff member Cole Angley. It included also Senator Michael Brady with Alfred D. Guerolamo, his staff member. Also, Michael Jackman, who was from Congressman Bill Keating's office-
Oh, wow, okay.
-joins this as well. We also had Benny Hung from Environmental Partners, and like I said, also, we had two members, actually, three members from Old Colony Planning Council. So this was a very heavily attended meeting by a lot of heavy hitters, so to speak.
Did we make any progress, Ms. Green?
We did.
Okay.
We did. So basically, progress is now, we all have an understanding of where the, where the challenge lies. We have a, we have a timeline to work with, and we have a direction of what we can do. And the main sticking point at this moment in time is the S U E, which is a, it's a utility evaluation that needs to be done to identify the exact location of the pipe, the exact depth of the pipe, and any other utilities, basically, that, not just this water pipe, but gas and electric. And it also will evaluate the condition, the structural condition of the pipe. So that is one, that's a direction that we have to go in so that Mast D O T can identify these issues. And then once this is all identified, then they have a direction as far as the design process.
Are our legislative partners going to help us get money to do that?
It was discussed, and basically, phone calls were made, and again, we can use ARPA money for this because it's, it's a construction project that's happening in Hanson, although it's, it's basically, it's their water pipe, but we are only identifying where the pipe is, the depth of the pipe, and the condition of the pipe.
I get that, Ms. Green, but we can't keep having ARPA be our solution for everything because then we lose the ability to have any meaningful changes made with ARPA money because it's death by a thousand cuts.
Right.
So I appreciate all of the effort that you put in, and certainly that everybody else did, but I think what I heard this board say when we met with Mr. DeFrias and with yourself and, and Mr. Clemmons, and I can't remember who else was part of that conversation, was, we want the state to come up with money for this. We want some kind of grant. We want some kind of money. It seems extremely unfair and unbalanced to look to this little town to, we already paid for, you know, for what we were required to pay to get this grant, and it seems extremely unfair because of a water line that's coming in from another town that is like some ancient contract that, you know, exists, that we're getting stuck with any kind of a bill at all. And so I am loath to spend one penny of this town's money, whether it's ARPA or otherwise. So is there a way to push this issue?
Well, at that particular meeting, there was no exact area of money that was identified right away. So research was going to be done. People were going to look into see, for instance, Old Colony Planning Council was going to look into a funding source. And then Senator Brady and Josh Cutler's office, we're going to continue to look into funding sources. And then we are going to look into funding sources.
And what's the follow, what's our timeline on this? What's the follow-up?
We have six months.
Okay, so-
Oh, six months to-
Six months to, can you expand on it?
To get this, to get this study done.
Okay.
Okay.
And when is your next follow-up meeting with this group of individuals or?
Well, we haven't, we haven't put together a full group. I hope to hear from Old Colony Planning Council sometime this week. They said in the next couple of weeks, we should hear from them. So that's kind of what we're waiting on to see if that's a possible funding source. If not, we are, we're going to have to see dig and see what else is out there.
Okay, so could we ask you to give us an update on all of this? Obviously not, you know, we've got one more meeting in February. No, I'm sorry, we've got two meetings in February. Perhaps by the 21st, which I think is our February meeting?
Yeah, I will provide you with updates almost, you know, every meeting as I learn, as we uncover and learn more.
All right, Mr. Hickey?
Well, one of the updates, Lisa, I would like is a point that I brought up when we first discussed this, and I do understand it's a problem area for some people, but the safety, how many accidents have actually happened?
Yeah.
You know, I just, you know, I brought that up, and they want to change the height of the road because, as Tony said, you could only see four and a half inches, but how many accidents has there actually been there?
And Ms. Green can certainly look into that, but as you recall, the prior board had voted based on a number of things that I honestly couldn't even reconstruct with a gun to my head. We were given like three or four projects, and then we had environmental partners made pitches for which ones, and then we had conservation chimed in and blah, 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 and planning chimed in, and this board selected three that we were going to apply for grants for, I should say, the prior board did. And we'd been awarded the grant. So whether, to your point, that is a problematic area or not, the grant has been awarded, and it's a $13 million grant.
Does our grant do it where it is now, though? The grant isn't to change the lay of the land, right? The grant is to redo the road as is, but this is something new that's-
This is a new wrinkle. Yeah.
Right.
So when we discussed this, we discussed it without the wrinkle, and we discussed it without knowing that the pipe is 139.
We had no idea.
Right.
No idea. And I did bring that up, and I hate to say it, but to me, that seems like what our engineer, it seems to me as though it was quite an oversight, and perhaps it's not something that's ordinarily looked at, you know, gee, do you have an ancient pipe running underneath this road? But it definitely could have been known at the time. It was not hidden. We all know that we have Abington-Rockland water lines, you know, mains running through town. It's like, you know, everybody knows that. So, you know, I, and I did mention it to Tony, and I think very highly of environmental partners, but this is a pretty big blunder. And I, and there's a part of me that wonders if we ought not to be pushing back on environmental partners and saying, look, but for the fact that you guys didn't identify this, we wouldn't even be in this position.
But what do we get out of that? Just calling them up and saying?
Well, probably we'd lose environmental partners as our engineer, which wouldn't really be that great.
Do we want them as our engineer where they had this big blunder?
They've done a lot of great work. I, I mean, it's, that's probably a discussion for another day, but, you know.
Oh, sure. We're talking about it now, so is it possible to give the grant back?
Oh, we can give, right now, we would, we would walk away from $13 million.
Because it could potentially be a costly situation for the town where the $13 million isn't going to pay for any of it.
Well, and I think Mr. DeFrias said that he's tried all kinds of different angles to try to refine, you know, work with them, refine, you know, how it's being used, maybe the criteria, have the D O T look at it a different way. That definitely is an option, but let's let it play out a bit before, I mean, because it's a huge dollar amount.
Yeah.
And it was identified by the town planner and, you know, environmental partners, and even the state agreed that the road needs work. That's why we got the $13 million. So, you know, what it is, it would connect to Pembroke. So let's see how it plays out, and I think then we'll circle back and we'll talk about-
So this grant can't be used unless we also address the wrinkle?
Well, so when we were given the grant, that wasn't-
Exactly.
That was not in the grant, in the, but-
If we didn't address the wrinkle and we just did the road-
Then we-
And we just did the road, would that still, would that pipe still be an issue? Or is it just the fact that they're lowering that makes it an issue?
Ms. Green, are they requiring us to do this additional work, the D O T?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's required. This study is required so that they know exactly where it is, not just the pipe. It has, it's done with like any, any type of utility, any type, so it could be electric, it could be gas. So this type of study is to identify the utilities that are under the roadway that could impact the-
But is that because we're lowering the road, or is that because we're doing the project?
Because we're doing the project. Because we're doing the project.
Because we're doing the project.
If we did the project without lowering the road, if they let us do it, we would still have-
They would not, Tony already asked that. They will not let us do it without lowering the road.
I think that's kind of, my, my mind is, I think Jim, Jim mentioned last time, it's like, well, maybe we'll make Circuit Street a one-way. I mean, they're a different, why, you know?
These are just hypothetical situations for the project at home. Okay.
Yes, I mean, it's not, yes, it's all hypothetical, but it seems, is there anything we can do to allow the project to go through without needing to lower it?
How much, do we know how much the cost is for this study? Tony threw around $100,000.
About $100,000.
Okay.
Yes.
Just for the study?
Just for the study.
Right.
To tell us where the pipe is.
They have to do the whole mile. They have to do the entire, the entire length of the project. So like I said, it's not just identifying just the pipe, it's identifying any other additional utilities that are, you know, that are in that mile of roadway.
And, again, I really, how is this not a deficiency in the engineering that got us to the point where we would have applied for this? I really urge us to take a look at that, Lisa. I keep coming back to it, and it's not sitting right with me. It's just, it, I, it is, it's not sitting right in my gut. I, I keep saying, look, we hire professionals to guide us through these processes, right? We're not experts in D O T requirements or what's required if we're going to redo a road. We hire, we hire an engineer to help us through that process. And I really hate to talk about the elephant in the room here, but to me, the elephant in the room is something, something jumped the tracks. Mr. Weeks, you look pensive.
I don't know. I just, I think, you know, last time we talked about this, we had, it was right during budget season, January 20th, we could have had one of the two representatives of the town write us a bill for $100,000 taking care of this. We didn't do that. We could have asked, you know, Representative Cutler, Senator Brady, I'm drawing a blank. Who's our other representative?
Back to Cost.
I'm sorry, DuCoste. Yeah, we could have them, you know, attach $100,000 to any, any bill or any budget discussion as an amendment from now moving forward. So I'm okay with the idea of trying to find other avenues to pay for it first, but I really want to emphasize, because I don't think it was really taken seriously the first time I said it, we need to get them to advocate for us.
Yeah.
They're our representatives. It's their constituency. It's their towns, and we, we had an opportunity to throw $100,000 plus on a bill. What's the worst-case scenario? They say no?
Right.
But we didn't even ask. So, I mean, that's an opportunity that's missed, and I really think that we should go back and have them do that. There's other mechanisms at play that you can just, you can add bills to things and hopefully get it in. So we can still do that, but I really want to, we need to do that.
We did, we did talk about it. Yep.
But if we have to bring some folks in and say, hey, you know, representative or state senator, would you mind coming in and talking to us about it? I mean, that's another thing that we can do. Let's have the actual conversation here and solve the problem. Because if you go back to environmental partners, there's pros and cons to everything. On the planning board, I work with them, and we've had issues and we've had successes. So it's kind of a mixed bag for me, but I think we need to have a situation where, when we bring people here, we can actually have a tangible conversation with the person, not through anybody or not through other groups. Just have them here. Let's just, let's talk to them. Environmental partners will just simply say, or even if, worst-case scenario, when we take environmental partners to court, a judge will say, well, just don't use, don't spend the money then.
You know what? They have liability insurance.
No, they very-
And I'm not, I'm not going to get into talking about, you know, litigation or anything because I, you know, I'm just asking the obvious question.
No, naturally. And I, but I'm just thinking, just for the sake of just putting it out there, before we even go down that road, just bring on the legislators. Just let's talk to them. Because we have all, there's no point in burning bridges before we even have the conversation.
Do people agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, Lisa, do you think it would be possible for us to get, you know, Cutler and Brady and DuCoste or their, and/or their representatives? We ideally would like them, so don't offer up the representative, to our next meeting? For the fall, the meeting after that?
I can certainly reach out to everyone.
And in the interim, can you be more explicit about the ask from this board?
Mm-hmm.
Which is, we appreciate your support. We appreciate you getting on the phone, but we need the money. Show me the money.
Okay.
Is that crass?
No, I think it makes sense. I mean, didn't the governor just sign a huge, huge-
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Huge.
I mean, we didn't know what we, we didn't know we needed it then.
Yeah.
But there's a precedent here.
Yep.
We can get money.
And, and, you know, at the MMA conference, Healy and Driscoll both said that infrastructure was a huge focus for them.
Yeah.
So-
Lieutenant Governor's priority right now is infrastructure.
Top priority, yeah.
Mr. Hickey?
Only if anyone is interested, Josh Cutler is at the senior center the first Friday of every month, which would be this Friday at 9:00 a.m. So.
Are you going to be there?
I am.
All right. Can you put a little B in his bonnet?
I will.
And we'll have Ms. Green, we'll do the one-two punch there, and, okay. And you'll reach out and be explicit about what we're looking for. Okay. Does that seem responsive to you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Green, such a controversial item on your, I think it was the first item on your town administrative report, but please, continue.
Well, you know, I just wanted to bring up, so, you know, our legislators, they really, they work hard for us behind the scenes.
Yes.
It doesn't always show up, the amount of work they do for us on the, on the outside. You know, they, a lot of it's done behind the scenes when they advocate for us for funds. You know, we've gotten quite a lot of earmarks from them for their application for us, the $30,000 for the outreach for the senior center.
Yep.
The $33,000 that they got for the firefighters to do the cardiac evaluations on the Whitney Hudson students, the athletes. The $170,000 that was just earmarked for us and approved for renovations and updates to the Plymouth County hospital sites and the Bonny House. The $40,000 for the Longbury, the $25,000 for the playground. They, they do, they do work hard for us and advocate for us, and, you know, it is appreciated. We thank them so much for all of this.
So we do want to do a shout out to Cutler and Brady who got that. I'm sure DuCoste will be part of it going forward, but that was historic.
Yes, so, you know, and their staff as well, that are always right there supporting us. So we do want to do a shout out and thank them for all of this hard work because we, we don't see what they do behind the scenes and all the work that has to go in when they do a bill and things like that. So a big shout out to all of our elected officials with the work they do. All right, moving forward, so the Veterans Service Officer, the ad was in the Whitman Hansen Express on Thursday, but we'll now move forward and update that. And Tony DeFrias and myself had a meeting with our general code bylaw codification team. The draft, the very initial draft is available for us to review and look at. So we needed a training to go in to maneuver right now the online E-code that this is under. Mrs. DeFrias is going to focus on the land use zoning. I'm going to focus on the general bylaw. And right now, this is just a, a review of how they've set it up. You know, questions that they had for each bylaw and things like that. And then, once this is done, we will start implementing the bylaw review committee to have a look at these. But at least this process is started, so we, we had that training. And today, so I don't know if you, you all have heard Whitman talk about the Madden Report.
Yes.
Which is a financial analysis that they had done by a gentleman named John Madden back in 2019. And what he did was he, he did a review of the finances of the town. He looked at spending, he looked at forecasting, he looked at revenues for the past years. He looked at capital plans, and then what he did was he put together a whole report that included suggestions, you know, how are you doing with your financial practices? What you, what you can, what can you do to tighten them up and make them better? Here's what I suggest, you know, this is what I see, this is, so I met with him today. I do have an idea of, you know, we both, we have an idea of what we want him to look at. He's going to send a proposal, and I will hope to present it to the next meeting. But again, this Madden Report is something that's talked about, it is, you know, what Whitman basically looks at and refers to. And I think when Hanson has its own Madden Report, we're going to be on the same level playing field as Whitman with, you know, having our Madden Report, so.
And will part of what they're focusing on, would that be the sustainability of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District budget?
Absolutely.
And our new growth versus what we're being asked to fund?
Absolutely, yes, yes. And he, he looks at the past, and he looks at now. We, you know, we, he looks at what we, our new growth and what we'll have coming in, and then he provides suggestions and recommendations. So, yes.
Well, that sounds great. So when are you anticipating getting a proposal back from him?
I will have it to you in the packet by the February 7th meeting.
Okay, awesome. That's great.
Yes, and that concludes my town administrator report.
Ms. Green, how are we doing in filling positions? Town accountant, obviously veterans agent, we just, you know, changed that a little bit, planning assistant, and the like.
So the planning, the administrative assistant, the part-time to the, the planning board and the town planner, that closed by today. Today was the day to submit your resumes and interests. We will, Tony and I will be reviewing the resumes that have come in, and then we'll stop interference. So that process is moving forward. Again, town accountant, the position, you know, hasn't been posted yet or anything because there's still the funding that we want to make sure will be appropriated and approved at town meeting. So it's probably a little, a little close, but I, it's good to keep Eric on right now while we work through town meeting to get that done.
And I know you had something, Mrs. Rain. One thing I would like, and I don't know how we do this or what form, but we have got to resurrect that highway building and put a bow on it. Because I committed to Mrs. Rain before she got elected, actually, at town meeting, when she stood up and said, well, what are you guys going to do about the highway, you know, building? And I said, Mrs. Rain, we will put a bow on that, and we have not put a bow on that, and that was last year, so.
So I know Jameson Chav, Highway Director, has received a proposal from Wesson and Sampson, who did the initial study on the Hox Ave, to do the study for their current site. So he has that proposal, and from what I understand, there's only three mem, there's only three folks left on that committee, which would be Jameson Chav, Mike Means, I believe, and.
And me.
And me, Mrs. Rain.
Yep.
Basically, that's it. So if that, those folks can get together.
Yeah, I need to go talk to Jameson.
And then just, you know, discuss, post a meeting, discuss, and then make a vote of.
I'm just wondering if you and Lynn could help facilitate that for Mrs. Rain?
Absolutely.
Because I've never done this before.
Yeah.
I need to learn how to do it. Yeah, because I would like to see that moving forward a little bit, and I have a little side project on that, but we'll talk about that later.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Rain, I know you had a question.
I just, I'm going to harp about the cannabis thing. Did we hear anything from our buddies?
So as a matter of fact, yes, we did.
Good.
Let me just pull up that email.
So if we're going to talk about using revenue from cannabis, we need to have revenue from cannabis to use.
Yes, that's a true.
Interesting how that works.
Let's see. Okay, so this is from Sharom, and I'm not going to attempt the last name, but he is one of the partners.
Mogadishu.
Yes.
What is it?
Mogadishu.
Mogadishu, okay.
Good job.
And he says, basically, last Friday, so this was Wednesday, January 25th, so this was basically the day. So he says, last Friday, which would have been the Friday before our January 24th meeting, had our first sale worth 100 K, but we will not get paid for 30 days. When that money comes in, it will be the first amount of money generated by the business. We have a few more sales in the pipeline, but it will take 30 to 60 days before it is finalized. So.
And did we get any insight into potential change of ownership with they are? I did go back and look at the community host agreement, and they most certainly are required to tell us, and we are required to approve any changes.
Any changes?
So we might want to remind them in the event that they were unaware of that provision in the community host agreement.
I haven't heard that there's been any changes. I will.
There is a very strong rumor mill going around, and, and it's from various sources. So I, that doesn't mean it's true, but the probability seems quite high.
I will, I'll definitely reach out and see if there has been any changes in that and remind them of the provisions. But that, yes, so that's the.
Well, that's great.
That's the update that we have.
That's great. Mr. Hickey?
Lisa, did you want to update the board on the regional agreement committee, or do you want me to do it?
Well, we don't, it's not really on the agenda because we don't have committee.
We can't deliberate, but I did want to mention that although we did not individually get invited, a notice, not an invite, was sent to Ms. Green for tomorrow evening for the Whitman Hansen Regional School Committee's public hearing of their budget. And I, so it wasn't a specific invite to us. I guess we're considered the public, and we could certainly attend just like anybody else in the public would attend. And then I'm wondering, should we put on our agenda for next week an update from you, because I know you're behind the scenes, working fast and furious, trying to effectuate a positive change for Hanson with our regional agreement?
Yes. Is that meeting on the 15th that you're talking about with the school committee?
No, it's tomorrow night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that not one you knew about?
Well, I, I talked to the chair, and there's a meeting on the 15th that I'm going to make sure I'm at.
And what is that one about?
It's more about the.
Agreement?
Regional agreement, yeah.
All right, so Lynn, could, do you mind popping that on the agenda for next week so that we can openly deliberate and talk about it and hear from Mr. Hickey about it?
It might just, you know, maybe once a month, first meeting.
Well, if we put committee and committee updates on, then that, on an ongoing basis, we won't have an issue with talking.
Yeah, I only wanted to bring it up because there was an article in the paper that, you know, prompted my bringing it up.
So you mean the February 7th meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, what did I say?
Next week.
Next week is February.
Oh, is it February 7th?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, wow, okay.
That's okay. For a minute there, you had me going, this is next week?
I thought, I thought we had a week off.
No.
No.
Don't you remember last week I said, do we really need to meet three weeks in a row? Do we have sufficient amount of material?
Yes, we do.
It seems like we do. Mr. Hill, did you have any questions or comments? Okay, did anybody have anything else? Okay, well then, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Salute. Okay, all in favor? All right, great.